Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 6th, 2021 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. I've still got to get used to getting 2021 to roll off like it's a natural thing. Happy New Year, everybody. And we have a pretty quick agenda tonight. First up is the approval of our minutes from December 2nd, 2020. If anyone want to raise their hand for a motion on that. Lloyd?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of December 2nd, 2020 as ready to the record.
Second. Danny seconded. Thank you very much. And I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up is a new item from an earlier agenda that was posted. And that's for a record plot, a re-subdivision plot. Greg, are you setting that up?
Yeah, we have one plat for the commission's review and approval tonight. That's plat RP-8721-2020 Victory Farm Lot 2, Partial A. It's been reviewed by staff and is ready for the planning commission's approval tonight.
All right, very good. Anybody have any questions about the plat? And Greg will work out something for a drop off or a connect to do your signatures. Is that the idea?
Uh, yeah, I think we're going to probably do it through DocuSign, but we can touch base.
Okay, sounds good. All right. If there's no questions, is our motion, please, on the record plat?
Chair, I move we approve record plat RP-8721-2020.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second. And Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. The record plat agenda passes. Next up, we have a resolution to consider tonight. And that's for SP-8648-2020 and ENV-8649-2020. Construction of a new 9.54 acre park at the former CPSC site at 10901 Darnstown Road in the MXD mixed use development zone. This is the final site plan and final forest conservation plan. And again, it's for a resolution. And I believe Chris, there you are. Chris Berger is setting this up from staff. Good evening, Chris.
Evening. If we can pull up packet page eight, please. And next page. This resolution seeks approval for the development of a 9.54 acre city park at 10901 Darnstown Road. If we can go to the next page, please. Planning Commission reviewed SP-8648-2020 at its last meeting on December 2nd, 2020. Per staff's recommendation, the planning commission deferred SP-8648-2020 and ENV-8649-2020 until tonight's meeting, and directed staff to return with a draft resolution of approval. Since the December 2nd planning commission meeting, staff has received five additional exhibits into the record, labeled as exhibits 12 through 16. And staff has prepared the resolution of approval for SP-8648-2020 and ENV-8649-2020, labeled in the record as exhibit 17, and recommends approval. Are there any questions?
As I noticed, on the, on the late, the later exhibits, they seem to echo questions that had come up earlier, either in the public hearing or other correspondence we got. And it wasn't clear in the way they were inserted in the packet. I'm assuming you guys, the staff had provided responses back to the homeowners who had sent those in and answered the questions or reiterated what was discussed at the hearing. Is that right?
That is correct. Staff has responded to each of the emails that have been submitted.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other questions? No? No hands are flying up. All right, great. Then with that, do you want, they're combined, right? So we just need one motion for both the site plan and the forest conservation plan.
Actually, I believe there are two motions which I could read if you would like me to.
I'm sorry, you're right. I clearly overlooked that. You're right, there are two. So the first one is for... Well, actually, yeah, let me let you get to that. Your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so the first motion, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant SP-8648-2020 final site plan approval and ENV-8649-2020 finding it in compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning code with one condition. And that condition is staff's minor comments on the forest conservation plan to be addressed prior to the issuance of any permits.
Can I have a question? We've got the draft resolution of approval in front of us, which includes both of those things. Can we just adopt the resolution of approval, Frank? Or do we actually have to vote on each one individually? Because the resolution of approval actually states that it resolves that we, as the commission, approve these two separate things with the condition it's all in one nice neat package.
Just for the record, it would probably be best to go ahead and vote on each one separately because they are, while the resolution includes it to try to capture everything you're doing tonight, they are technically two separate actions.
Okay, I was just curious. I know Congress likes to...
Good question.
Congress likes to adapt, adopt acts that, you know, do 300 things at once. I didn't know if we could do.
And I don't know. There is actually a second motion as well, requesting approval for a waiver of a tree removal variance. We should probably read that one as well, I think, Chris.
Okay, I will read that one. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings and staff recommendation grant as part of final site plan SP-8648-2020, a variance for removal of eight specimen trees, finding the variance request in compliance with section 22-12D of the city code.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris. Our record is closed, and I think we've had full discussion on this at our previous meeting. But are there any questions or concerns with the proposed resolution?
No questions or concern, but it's a, it was a great exhaustive process. So I'm happy that it's sort of, we got into final site plan and we're good to go.
And, and I think a quality product at the end of that process.
Absolutely. Certainly what we're fine, so.
Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else, is there a motion, please, on the first item, which is for the site plan?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted applicant's testimony, staff reports findings and recommendations grant SP-8648-2020 final site plan approval and ENV-8649-2020 finding them in compliance with section 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with the two conditions.
Mr. Chair, point of order. There was supposed to be two separate motions, weren't there?
There is. I'm reading from the staff packet, which has a second motion for the tree variants.
The, the final forest conservation plan is part of the final site plan, so it can be included is in that motion. The second motion is for the tree removal variance.
The variance, yeah. And again, a clarification is, there's only one condition, correct?
There's two conditions.
There, there's one condition.
Oh, I apologize. One condition.
We had a previous condition related to approval from the State Highway Administration, and we have since received that, which is exhibit 15 in the record.
That was the earlier, but I think what Phil was reading from was the earlier staff report from last week, okay? But today, tonight's resolution relates just one condition.
One condition, okay. My emotion's amended.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. And let me get to the roll call. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And next up was the variance request for the specimen tree. So is there a motion for that, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on exhibit submitted applicant's testimony, staff report, staff's findings and staff's recommendations grant as part of final site plan SP-8648-2020, a variance for removal of eight specimen trees, finding the variance request in compliance with section 22-12 sub D of the city code.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Now, I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes. We got a new park on the way. That's exciting. Thanks, Chris, for all the work on that. And please extend our thanks and gratitude to the whole team for, for working all this, working all this out over the last, gosh, how many years, right?
Yeah, yeah. We'll do. Thank you.
Nice work. All right, the last item of kind of regulatory nature on our agenda today is a recommendation to the Marion City Council on text amendment 8611-2020. I'm going to stop right there and let, if you want to bring in the rest of the team, Chris, let Rob Robinson read the full description to the record because it's quite long, and he'll just repeat it anyway if I read it into the record. Rob, are you able to unmute?
Sorry, I was on mute and on video. They just brought me over, so we're good. While John Schlichting will be doing the presentation, I'm happy to read the introduction for everyone and save them that pain. So this is an ordinance to amend chapter 24 of the city code entitled zoning. So as to amend section 24.1 entitled definitions, to amend the definition of public use and amend section 24-102A4 entitled uses in the CP zone, amend section 24.11110 entitled uses permitted by right in the C1 zone. Section amend 24.1123 entitled uses permitted as special exceptions in the C1 zone. Amend section 24.11724 entitled uses permitted by right in the C2 zone. Amend section 24.123H7 entitled permitted uses in the C3 zone. Amend section 24.13624 entitled uses permitted by right in the I1 zone. Amend section 24.1432 entitled uses permitted by right in the I3 zone. Amend section 24.1512 entitled permitted uses in the E1 zone. So as to clarify the extent of residential uses permitted as public uses and the public use definition in the zoning ordinance. And with that, I will turn it over to John because he probably is not out of breath.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I am John Schlichting. I'm your Director of Planning and Code Administration. This item before you tonight for a recommendation to the mayor and council is an ordinance to amend chapter 24 to define public uses to exclude all residential in all of our non-residential Euclidean zones. This text amendment was introduced on September 21st. The joint public hearing was held on November 16th. And your record closed at 5:00 PM on December 18th with 24 exhibits. As we discussed at the public hearing, this text amendment only applies in our commercial, employment and industrial zones where residential is not permitted, not a permitted use currently. We do want to emphasize that this text amendment is in no way addressing the merits of affordable or transitional housing, which is of course a major priority for the city. In fact, the city of Gaithersburg has a larger percentage of affordable housing than surrounding Montgomery County. What this text amendment is about is avoiding conflicting land uses and reinforcing the purpose of the master plan. This text amendment will exclude all types of residential in all of our zones where residential is already not a permitted use by redefining public use, which is a permitted, permitted use in all of these zones, but to exclude residential. Public uses have always been seen as direct functions of government entities that serve all of the community, like parks, schools, city halls, police stations, roads and utilities. Residential uses are always privately occupied. Staff readily admits that public entities that provide affordable housing are providing an important and essential public benefit. Again, a priority for the city, but any kind of housing by its very nature is not a public use. Furthermore, including residential as a public use actually circumvents the master plan, circumvents the intent of non-residential zones and circumvents the role of the planning commission, the council and the public in the master plan process. During the public hearing, staff was asked to research how other jurisdictions address public use, the possibility of applying conditional use requirements and whether other public uses should be prohibited. There is a comprehensive memo in your package addressing all of these issues, but any significant change to the ordinance before you tonight would require a new public process. So your recommendation tonight should be limited to the one before you. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM 8611-2020 to the Marion City Council. And Tom, Rob and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks, John. And I'll reiterate that our record's closed. Tonight is really just our discussion and recommendation to the council. Does, do any of the commissioners have questions on what's been proposed, what's being proposed? No? Okay. For the record, I do want to get some, some discussion on the record and, and be sure that we're, we're clear about what ultimately we recommend, whether for against, what it's based on. So I have a proposal to frame up the discussion this way, that regardless of all of the valid concerns and potential downstream effects this might have on, on projects, regardless of the merits of those, regardless of the seriousness of those, we actually play a relatively narrow role. And again, I'm proposing this, but I'm certainly open to having, having a different perspective. And our role being to advise the Marion Council on whether or not what they're proposing for this amendment, really, it does two things. If it is consistent with the intent of the zones as they currently stand, the CNE zones, which is that they're a commercial use or they're an industrial use and not, not a residential use. And if this, this proposed change is consistent with the master plan or kind of in converse, doesn't, doesn't do anything to undermine the master plan. I think that, that sums up really the two fundamental issues where we're supposed to focus and discuss as a way to justify our recommendation to the council. And I, if, if there's any, any more to that, please, please chime in. But I would propose that we focus on those two, two points to formulate our recommendation.
John, I mean, I, I think I agree with that. I struggled in, in reading this and ended the public hearing. You know, there are several, several solid hours worth of good public policy debate around this that, that are, that is really, really needs to be left to the Marion Council that have frankly little, if anything, to do with planning or zoning, but are, are public policy discussions. And I think limiting our discussion to, to our purview, which as you noted is, is intent of zoning and intended master plan, I think is, is the right approach.
While you have the, while you have the frame, and with that, you, you see anything inconsistent about this proposal with those two items, or?
I, I... Here is the nuance of it, and my, my initial reaction is that if, if this was in a vacuum, if we were, if we were talking hypothetically and saying, okay, here is our zoning code on paper. Here's the proposed change. Is it aligned and intent? I would say sure. I think my one and only hang up. And I say this as somebody who's lived in Gaithersburg now for only 10 years, is the historical precedent of some of the other properties within this zone or within the, not zone, I should use, be more careful with my words, within this area that are similar, similar uses to what we're discussing. And so I know that came up during the Marion Council meeting. And unfortunately, we don't have transcripts of the discussion, and we don't have records of, of what the intent was when those projects were, were approved and greenlit. So to come at this point and say those public uses, some of which already exist, are, are not consistent with the intent of these zones. So we should clarify the, the zoning text to prohibit them. That is my only hang up, is that some of these do exist in these zones. And so, you know, it comes down for me frankly, a little bit to a, this would be much easier if it was a discussion about this in a, in a vacuum where none of these uses existed. It would be much more black and white to me.
Okay, good point. And maybe Rob or John, if you want to comment on the existing, what essentially will become legally non-conforming if this moves forward, what, what, how that might frame up some of this discussion.
So to jump in, you know, what council member Wessel's alluding to, there are two other public uses that include residential. And it's been two that have been done in the last 30 years. One of them was done in the seventies and candidly through research, we can't even find records for how it was approved. The second one was Seneca Heights, which was over a decade ago. And again, one of the differences with that upon doing research, and I don't want to go in, but, but I will. That was done in coordination with the city of Gaithersburg and the Department of Housing and Community Development. It was a direct county agency. It was not an HOC. But even then, by going through the records, it's really not clear what process it went through or what the discussion was. And again, I guess where I want to go with this is because we had two, doesn't mean the world is the same now as it was when those were approved. So, you know, contextually, things change. There's different pressures, you know, regardless of COVID or whatever else. We had far more Euclidean zones at the point in time the first one was done than we did floating zones. So just because two had occurred previously, I, I don't believe we should take the narrow view that that precludes us from potentially doing something that has a stronger legal foundation in this text amendment now. You know, if that's the case, then zoning would never change because we, every action we take essentially creates somewhere usually some sort of legally non-conforming use. But because the winds of change bring forward, and again, even the Seneca Heights thing, to be clear, that wasn't done like two years ago. I mean, that was over a decade ago. That was the earlier part of this century. So again, it's, I acknowledge that they exist, but, but I can't necessarily draw apples to apples comparisons to the discussion that's going on right now. And again, that, those two uses are, you know, residential in a, in a conflicting zone. Yes, even, but again, things, things are, there's different aspects from which to prism to view this text amendment now that weren't in place when those occurred.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to share a map?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put in my two cents, which is that this is a, in my mind, I couldn't find the complexity of it. It's, in my mind, it's really very simple. I've often a champion of clarifying our code, of clearing out some of the cobwebs and updating the language along with how older language interacts with our new evolution of things like floating zones and, and, you know, master plan friendly zones and the sort of remnants of the Euclidean zones. Their, their advantage is their clarity, their simplicity, their, you know, sort of mathematical approach to development. And I, and I think when we discuss those things, that clarity is the goal. Like you don't have a Euclidean zone and, and leave ambiguity. You, you really, you really, the whole purpose of having that is that the neighbors, the community can depend on the constrictions and constraints and clarity of those Euclidean zones. So anything that we do in terms of language or staff proposes that increases the clarity of those definitions to me is a, is a, is more than likely a good thing. And certainly, if the primary language is, is a clear break, when you say enterprise zone, when you say commercial zone, when you say industrial zone, you're not including residential and that, and that's explicit in, in the zoning. The Euclidean definitions of those zones are clear. The entire purpose of them being separated, simplified, you know, in my mind exclusionary zones is, is that they're not residential, right? So I don't see any complexity in approving this. I think it's a wonderful clarification of the language. I think it's good to go forward, and you don't use legal loopholes to sort of throw out the clarity of Euclidean zoning.
Good comments. Thank you, Matt. Anyone else? Daniel, what do you want to jump in?
Let's see. I appreciate Matt's statement, and although I don't agree with Matt most of the time, I do on this one. I think, you know, the old kiss adage seems to apply here very well, and I would endorse the, the new plan.
Okay, thanks, Lloyd.
Yeah, I, you know, I read it several times, and I was trying to, like, Matt, you know, am I oversimplifying it? But I didn't, I didn't seem to have a problem with it. I, I, I'm fine with it the way it is.
Okay, thanks, Andy. And I guess to reiterate, I, I I recognize that there are some existing conditions. This is not to say they're going to go away or they need to be shut down or they need to be removed. They will be legally non-conforming. Am I right, Rob? That's the term, okay?
Yes.
And, and to whatever, to what, to whatever degree the justification for building those or developing those sites, however many, many years ago it was, I'm going to trust that it was a careful and it was a thoughtful and it was a reasonable decision at the time, given what other, whatever other pressures were in play or limitations that it may even, for opportunities to do that, and it was the right thing at the right time. But it, it's not, it's, it's, I don't think there's any way to construe that as a precedent for doing it everywhere in, in the commercial or industrial zones or enterprise zone. So I, I agree with Matt. I think it's, it's, it's really an appropriate way to simplify where these zones exist to keep them as clean and as straightforward as possible. So we can have a clear direction on, on, on development, moving forward. And all while understanding that we have plenty of opportunities emerging on the horizon for developing all kinds of, of housing diversity, whether it's, it's strictly speaking affordable or it's transitional. John, I hadn't heard that name in a while, but that, but you're right. Transitional is one of the other ones, and of course workforce housing. So we have some tremendous opportunities coming up for that to be done. And I think one thing I do want to kind of punctuate this with is, you know, we, we also care about quality and just throwing something into a zone, a commercial zone, because there happens to be a roof available is probably not, not responsible on anybody's part because, you know, you want it, you want the, regardless of the status of the housing in terms of being public or not. You, you, in my opinion, you wouldn't want it to be just, just enough. You would want it to maintain a level of quality and parity with, with the, the best housing in the community. And that means being in a residential zone and being thoughtfully integrated with the rest of the development that's happening. So with all that kind of said, I think, I think it all kind of lines up very well that we don't, that we recommend this move forward as it's been proposed.
I would just add, John, to the great description you just gave, I would just add that, you know, properties like this, particularly, you know, flagship properties that, that this was referenced to, not that it has any relevance to the actual text amendment, but it, but properties that are flagship properties are eagerly awaited by, I'm sure, staff certainly, and I'm sure the planning commission for rezoning, right? So if there's something that, 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 you know, pulls at what the city and the market needs, you know, we're eager to support the public process of rezoning a property.
Great point, great point. All right, so we're, we're moving forward, I believe, with a recommendation to the Marion City Council to approve this text amendment. Are there any, any other concerns or points that y'all would like to bring up before we formally do that? Okay. So it's relatively straightforward. Staff was recommending the approval. Is there a motion, please? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM 8611-2020 to the Marion City Council.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and so I'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I will, I as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Good discussion. And I think, I think we're moving this in the right direction. All right, so now we have, we're scrolling, we have our annual election of officers. And I will, I will stand up front. I am very much interested in continuing as your chair, but I will open up the floor to nominations. So a hand or chiming in is appropriate. Lloyd, please.
I nominate John Bauer to remain as chairman of the planning commission the year 2021.
I accept that.
One of these years, we're going to ask him if he wants to do it, but.
That's right.
I think I'm going to beat you. I'll beat you to saying it's time to retire.
Nope.
Great. All right. Any other nominations?
No.
And I believe I can short circuit this right to a roll call vote. So all in favor, and I will do the roll call now. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I will abstain. And so that passes 401. Thank you all very much. I appreciate the, the trust you continue to put in me. The trust you continue to put in me. I will make a long speech about it because, you know, we're we're not into that here.
Every year, we thank you for doing.
That is, that is. I can give the speech later. All right, and that takes us then to our vice chair nominations for vice chair. Anybody?
Does anyone know who the vice chair is now?
I was gonna say who's the vice chair.
I added this year, so it's somebody else's turn.
Okay, so there's a rotation in there somewhere, but I don't have a clue.
There is a rotation.
This is usually.
Lloyd, do you know who it is?
This is the part where we all look at each other and say, whose turn is it this year?
Right.
I think it might, but I'm not sure.
I nominate, I I want to nominate Lloyd. I want to nominate Lloyd as vice chair. Let's let's just keep it moving.
That sounds great.
Okay, are there any other nominations? So I'll move, I'll move to the the vote for confirming that nomination of the chair, vice chair, Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I abstain.
Commissioner Winborn.
Hi.
And I will vote I as well, wholeheartedly and robustly.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence you all have in me.
So, well. So that passes four zero one. Thank you very much, Lloyd, for agreeing to serve. I will be sure to be absent a few times this year. Maybe a little bit of action.
Zooming.
It's it's getting harder there, right? Because of that business travel, you know, it's not like we're we're caught somewhere unable to to be at the meeting.
Yeah, I feel bad for Sharon. She's.
We need to have, we need to have a rotating schedule of who's going to be absent for which meetings so that Sharon can get to do something.
Exactly.
Well, I did get my COVID shot today, so I have one shot down. I have one more to go.
Oh, really? Wow, wow, you're the first person I've known.
Yeah. DC government is very organized, by the way. You can go online, DC Health, you may be able to get in.
Okay.
Interesting. Okay, thanks all for that. Let's go to from the commission. I'm in no particular order. Matt, anything tonight?
Nope.
Lloyd, anything tonight?
Nope.
Danny?
Just echo your your opening greeting of Happy New Year to everyone. That's it.
Great, thanks, Danny. Oh, by the way, any news from State Planning Commissioners Association, anything on the horizon?
Well, we had a meeting today and and we're 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 working on our schedule of. Of presentations this year. We we just met this this afternoon at three o'clock, so I don't have anything for you yet, but I will probably have something for you next meeting.
I had the I had the pleasure of logging in. What was it, three or four weeks ago when you all were cleaning up your violas and were looking for enough members to?
Oh, yeah, and thank you so much. You you, I think you made the motion for us or something.
I did. When I finally logged in, somebody said, oh, good. We have whatever.
Right, exactly. I really appreciate you doing that.
I felt I felt really important, you know, and like I cherish the moment. All right. Thanks, Danny. Anything, Phil?
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay, great. And Greg, John wants to jump in.
Just tell everyone Happy New Year and then remind the commission the next meeting is January twentieth.
Great, thanks. John, anything tonight?
Yeah, I've got a few things. First of all, congratulations Chair Bauer and Vice Chair Kaufman on another year of leadership here on the commission. We're. Very pleased to have all of you on this commission. And speaking of Sharon, she just texted me. She wanted me to give Matt a shout out. For mentioning her and she supports the idea of alternating. Couple other things. First of all, just wanted to let you know that as of, it was, I forget the date, but right before Christmas. We kind of reverted to back to by appointment only at city hall. Doors are now locked and but what we have not reduced any services, you know, we. We pretty much restored all our services after the, oh, Sharon just texted me that she didn't say that. Anyway, we, you know, we pretty much ramped up all services very quickly after the after we shut down in March. But. In July, we went to, we had the doors open and, you know. We had walk-ins, but before Christmas, we've gone to appointment only. So that's been a little bit bit of a change. But again, you know, we still have all our services and we're trying to. Maintain everybody's working, you know, everybody's either teleworking or working at city hall and there's. No downtime for any of the staff right now.
Great. So so I guess that means that on the rare occasion that we might need something, we probably need to contact you all first.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
We do. Although, you know, what you can just actually show up at city hall and die and call the number and somebody will come to the door. So.
Okay, okay. I'll call, well, I'll call. I mean, if there's ever a need, I'll call first.
Yeah, I gotta say, looking looking from the outside in, you know, when all this is settled and things are back to sort of norm, whatever normal looks like in the future. I gotta believe the city hall, the way you guys have managed the staff and the the transition from. You know, in person to to distance and back and forth and and all of the things you've done to keep this stuff on is going to be somebody's really good positive case study on how to pull this off. I. Applaud all of you and how how smoothly things seems to have run. Now, I probably don't know how the sausage is made, right? I mean, there's. Probably all kinds of stuff going on I haven't seen, but from the outside, it looks like you guys have done a remarkable job to keep keep the city on track, all of the services and all of the. Not only the services as a thing, but. The the level of engagement and and and, you know, commitment to doing it in timely and thorough ways. It's a nice work.
Thank you, John. And I think I'm not taking any credit for it, but it's it's well deserved because our staff has been unbelievably resilient and I've been incredibly. Proud of of how we've been able to respond.
But John, John, I have a question. So are you all rotating being in the office? So there's at least one person. Is that what it is? I think you said.
Yeah, there's. There's a pretty complicated schedule. Division does it differently, but there's always somebody there. And in fact, Mary Shell, who's our front desk greeter, comes in at lunchtime so that the others can take lunch. And and Greg has got it worked out with the planning staff. And, you know, there's always somebody there. Pod calls and so forth, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Great. One thing I was going to add, and I've asked this before and there's no rush, but if you would, Greg or Rob, if you're still listening. Put on our agenda in the next few months or say next month, next couple of meetings. What the outlook is for master plan work, some of the updates that were, we were hearing about, you know, a year ago, and I know that there's there's good reason to interrupt that that pace, but. Just sort of what's on the schedule now, looking forward to twenty one and maybe even into twenty twenty two. I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we can definitely get you guys an update at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else, Frank? Everything all right with you guys in the legal department?
No updates. Everything is fine. I'm generally, you know, something were to come up. I'm generally at city hall. Day to day. I mean, there's not too many people on the second floor, so I'm achieving sufficient social distancing.
Sounds like isolation.
Yeah, well, in some, in some ways, but. People work in different ways and I have. A lot of books and different manuals that it makes it a little easier to be able to grab them. And then also have a pretty, a pretty good computer setup, so.
Great.
But anyway, no other, no other updates. We. You know, right now, the the court systems are generally in a. What they call phase two through the middle of March. You know, that's subject to change, but, you know, it's looking like this is going to be going on for the next, the next several months at least.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all. If there's nothing else, looking across the grid here. Have a good evening, Happy New Year, and. See you next year. We're or see you next time. We're adjourned.